You've got a good boss, so I don't think you can lose your job. You're in a bad place right now.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
You look festive from what I can tell, Pamela.
Yes, yes.
I have my closet has exposed itself to having very little pink or red. I live in a world of blues and plaids.
That's okay.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm say pretty safe from a fashion standpoint. I won't be on Project Runway or whatever that show is that my wife watches, so.
Some of us, some of us were saying that having a town board meeting on the night of Valentine's Day was not, not particularly cohesive to marital harmony. You have that correct, Mayor.
We probably gave up marital harmony when we decided to be public servants and elected officials.
Well, that's true. That's true.
All of them were raised to get through it quick.
I've found, I've found out, though, that if you, if you say, oh, it looks light tonight, that that's sort of the curse of death. You are right. We've said that, and we've ended up late, late, late. Yep.
Invariably, some somehow it gets jinxed and we end up on something for quite a while, so.
Let's see, it looks like we're short of Jay Farrell. Is that correct? Is everybody else with us?
Jay's here.
Jay's here.
Mr. Farrell's here.
Okay. Then are we ready to commence the meeting?
Commissioner Farrell, you're muted. We're still unable to hear you. It looks like you're speaking, but we can't hear you.
Let's, let us go ahead and call the meeting to order if we might then. As is our custom, we'll begin our meeting. This is the board meeting for the Town of Pittsboro Board of Commissioners for Monday, February the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and we will begin our meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you very much. The Pledge of Allegiance, Jay Farrell, may we call on you again to lead us in the pledge.
Yes, ma'am. I'm trying to get on right now. Hold on just one minute.
Okay.
Okay, would everyone rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you very much. Our first motion for this evening will be to present the agenda. Is there a motion to either approve the agenda or to make a motion to modify?
Before I make the motion, I'd like to ask a clarifying question of Mr. Kennedy. The date has changed on the package supporting the agreement with Chatham Park Investors as pertains to the Sanford Water End Sewer Program. Was there any other changes besides the date?
No, sir. The only thing that that was a part of scribbling or anything, Commissioner Ship identified, and that we had pointed out before, it was, it was a my that was actually supposed to be a May. And on one of the pages, everything else remains the same as it was last time. We've, we discussed the parameters and, and, you know, the effects of the language in there and felt comfortable with it was how it was proposed before.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Did you then, John Bonnet's wish to make the motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, thank you. So moved.
Is there a second? Kyle Ship seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Our first matter of business tonight is the resolution recognizing Black History Month. And I will take a moment here to read the resolution. You've had it included in your package. Whereas Black History Month is the annual celebration and observation of a special period to recognize the achievements and contributions of Black African Americans. And whereas Black History Month was first conceived of in nineteen twenty-six by Carter G. Woodson as Negro History Week and celebrated during the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, President Gerald R. Ford officially recognized the celebration for the entire month of February, calling upon the public to, quote, seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, every American president has designated the month of February as a Black History Month and endorsed a specific theme. And whereas the theme for twenty twenty-two is Black Health and Wellness. And this observation affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable and to honor the achievements and contributions of Black African American scholars and medical practitioners. And whereas Black African Americans have made significant contributions in science, medicine, theology, education, music, sports, and public service, including the positions of both President and Vice President of the United States of America. And whereas the pursuit of knowledge about Black African American history can strengthen our insight regarding the issues of human rights, the historical and ongoing strides to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town of Pittsboro Board of Commissioners that the month of February in the calendar year twenty twenty-two be celebrated as Black History Month and urge all citizens of our community to give full regard to the past and continuing service of Black African Americans generally and to the twenty twenty-two theme of Black health and wellness in our town, our state, and our nation. Adopted this the fourteenth day of February twenty twenty-two. And is there a motion by the board to accept this resolution? So move.
Second.
Move, move by Pamela Baldwin. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second. Who was the second?
I had Mr. Bonnet's.
Mr. Bonnet's. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you so much. All right, now we move to the motion carries and that resolution will be put into the books of resolution for the Town of Pittsboro. Next is our updates and Commissioner concerns. The manager's update is first. Chris Kennedy?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and happy Valentine's Day. I'm probably the last to tell you that, maybe, maybe the first, who knows? A couple of updates for you this evening. One is a formatting change. Just want to alert folks to the QR codes on the, on the agendas. Hopefully, people found those helpful. We've, we've been including a QR code on the agenda for a little over a year now, or approximately that long. And that's always been a link to the packet materials. And so these meetings are streamed on YouTube and no, no one that folks may look at these after the fact if they find the agenda. So what I've done is I put a QR code with the town logo to the packet materials to the website. And then another QR code that's on the left-hand side that goes directly to the YouTube stream. So whether you can stream it live or watch it down the road at your convenience. I hope both those are clear, and certainly there's a shift and it kind of part of our ongoing efforts to improve how we communicate with our public and provide them the materials so they are, can easily find records or participate in public business. So I welcome any feedback on those. I know we had talked about that a few weeks back about, again, continual improvements. And so that's, that's my take on that, and hopefully that has, that's been helpful for those. So I wanted to provide a brief explanation to that. Secondly, we are still moving forward with our program at Chatham Marketplace. So just want to kind of inject that reminder to folks. If you are a town water customer, we are still providing water at the marketplace. If you, again, if you have any questions, please direct those to the town. We're happy to answer any questions you may have about that. We appreciate Evan Diamond and his staff at the Marketplace for their assistance and support of that. But again, understanding that this is not their program, they're just kind enough to help us with that. We ask that anybody has questions, they, they direct those towards town staff. The board brought up a few signs, and since they were brought up a few weeks ago in the final comments, I wanted to provide an update that depending on what your sign concern was, that sign is either up or down. So Commissioner Ship, you brought up the farmer's market sign. DOT has now removed that sign from across here from Town Hall. Ms. Baldwin, your sign request for front with King is back up at the corner intersection of Thompson Street. Apparently, that sign has been stolen in the past. Apparently, that's, that's a great college dorm room sign of sorts, and so hopefully we can keep it up there long enough. But again, we're glad to have that one back. And then Commissioner Bonnet's, the one you brought up with the church, that sign is now down. So I'm pleased to put a bow on those three concerns that have been kind of ongoing and seemingly simple tasks, but things aren't always as simple as we'd like them to be. So we wanted to provide that update and put a bow on that. And then finally, just a general update about the budget process. We're, we're well underway. Meeting with department heads this week about the individual departmental budgets. Heather Beecham, our finance officer, and I have been working on the revenues. From what we found today, it looks like the, the revenues are a bit tempered. We're looking at a pretty neutral year, if that, in terms of growth. Obviously, our utility situation prevents us from having the, the explosion of growth that we much discuss here in many, many forums and look at land use entitlements. So we look at a pretty, pretty neutral year. Obviously, last year was a, a larger gain due to the revale from the county, but we'll be a couple more years from another revale. So not unexpectedly, we didn't expect the same amount of growth that we had last year with the revaluation and property reappraisal. But budget's going well so far. Again, we're having departmental conversations this week. We'll be moving to our department head retreat, second week of March, and then obviously moving forward with the board's aspects of that with the retreat, two public hearings, and ultimately a vote on that budget. I'll be sending an email out this week to the board, one to discuss scheduling for the retreat. After talking with staff, it appears that the date we've chosen is not only Saturday of the Masters, which is important to some people, it's also spring break. And so we may not have the staff or the people who wish to attend from external parties there because they may be attending the spring break items. So I'll be sending an email, seeing if we can maybe find an alternative date, that first week of April. And, and again, we'll try our best to get everyone we can in the room, but understand that schedules are tight and everyone's got something to do about every single day these days. So we'll try to be sensitive to that. Also be sending an email to the board. I know it was mentioned at the last meeting about having a budget scoping session or another one in advance of the budget retreat. So I'll be sending an email to that. So for the general public who may be listening in, just keep an eye on, as, as we have conversations and whether we, we do in fact set up another meeting. And that will be a special meeting of the board. So it, it has potential to move quickly. We only need forty-eight hours notice for a meeting like that. We'll try to give the public as much time as we can, but as the days tick away, we'll be talking with the board about a potential topic for that and, and a schedule for that. So just kind of putting that on the radar without a, a date certain, and that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you very much. Under mayor updates, there are just two things. On January the twenty-eighth, I worked with our Congressman David Price for a taping session regarding infrastructure funding that Representative David Price has proposed and is supporting. And that was done at the Pittsburgh Water Plant, the picturesque basins in the background. And, and that was just a really lovely event to be able to share with folks from the press as well. And on February the eleventh, I was interviewed by students in the planning department at North Carolina NC State University on issues regarding growth, particularly as Chatham Park. And I enjoyed doing that very much. And the questions by the young people was certainly, were certainly excellent and look forward to seeing what their research revolves. Are there Commissioner updates on the various organizations which are there on our agenda?
Mayor Perry, I attended the PBA last week. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Patrick Norman gave a short, still about the fifteen five oh one in Hillsborough Street widening. Construction's expected to start in twenty twenty-five. The, the plan is right now sidewalk on the west side and multi-use on the east. They got quite a bit of easements to work through and property. So then, like I said, they're, they're looking to start in twenty twenty-five. But he gave a really short summary of that project. That was pretty much all that PBA had, other than introducing some, a few new members.
Thank you, Jay.
Commissioner Farrell, question on that. Did you say any particular time in twenty twenty-five?
No, if he did, I overlooked that, John. I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right.
Commissioner Bonnet's, they are identifying spring. So I think the, the bid let date is February of twenty twenty-five. That's what's been relayed to staff, which means that that's when they're opening the bid and awarding the project. And then so mobilization will probably lag behind sixty to ninety days behind that.
Okay, for Main Street, Pittsburgh, we've, we had a regular meeting and a budget meeting, and we'll, we'll talk about that some later, so I won't take up that time now. And then for the Chatham County EDC, I did a board orientation for that group. So that was a really good session, just an overview of all the, the different mega sites in the county and all the activity we've been seeing there. So just a significant amount of activity and likely some announcements soon from EDC. And then our regular meeting for EDC is this Wednesday, so I'll be attending that.
I did attend my first Chatham County Climate Change Advisory Committee meeting. And I don't really have much to report since basically I'm getting my feet wet in that committee. And, and we did have an excellent speaker and had a review of the ten recommendations that the county has, that the committee has given to the county. And, and those were presented before the county commissioners at a recent meeting. But I will keep you all advised as soon as I have a better grip on things. Thank you.
I would add that with the help of Mayor Perry and Teresa Thompson, I was able to sit in on the Tarpaulin meeting. I've got a lot to learn there, but I'm engaged in trying to figure out what questions still to ask, but I certainly am paying attention, and I am still trying to make contact with the Arts Council. I'm just not having any luck getting responsiveness there, but I'm going to reach out more this week and pick up the phone, I guess. That's what I've got.
Thank you, James. Pamela Baldwin, I did see that you had sent some Triangle J Council of Government meetings and information out in the most recent batch of things you had received.
Yes, I did. And basically, we attended, John and I, Commissioner Bonnet's. And basically we attended, John and I, Commissioner Bonn, it's and I rather, attended the Triangle J Council of Governments meeting. He was introduced as one of the new delegates. And I hope that he enjoyed that meeting. It was not, it was, it was a good meeting, I believe. So, and it's interesting to hear the different things that the different counties, as well as cities are doing around Triangle J.
Thank you very much. Are there any, any other reports? Hearing none, we've moved into citizen matters. And Kelly Hughes, this evening, welcome. And are there speakers signed up for citizens' public comment?
Madam Mayor, there, there are not.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, I'm not Kelly, so sorry to just step on Kelly's toes.
Very good, thank you. Next then would be the consent agenda. We have seven items for your consideration. Is there a call for action on this consent agenda, either to approve it or to modify it in any manner?
Make a motion. Oh, sorry.
One, on item number one, I have just one question on that. If, if I could just ask that question, we can move on.
Certainly.
It's regarding the, the get it up, man. It's regarding the facade grant program. And but I was unaware that, that, that I thought the property owners had to pay a 50% of the cost. So according to this, it says no property owner cost. That's the only question I had about that.
Yeah, Jay, I guess I learned this as well, but there, there's a distinction between facade grant, which is a 50% match, or public art, which is 100% funded by Main Street Pittsburgh. So the mural is public art. So it would be 100% funded. And, and so this request is to use facade grant funds that we have currently extra of to pay for that mural.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Kyle, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for that explanation. So Kyle, were you making a motion then?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And Jay Farrell seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We note that there are no public hearings tonight on the agenda, no old business or new business. So that brings us to miscellaneous matters. And as, as Kyle predicted, we will be talking about Main Street Pittsburgh continuation. And, and that is to be led, Chris Kennedy, by you.
Yes, ma'am, I will start this off and very soon after defer to the board. And so obviously we, we have, I would say much discussed this historically, but not a lot recently about, you know, continuation of services. You know, last fall, early last fall, when, when the board decided to bring back Main Street program into the town as a department and not run it through the 501(c)(3) like we have for the last several years. That, that, you know, precipitated several conversations, both, a lot of them outside of the meetings, both with Main Street officials and, and staff and others. And so what the purpose of this conversation for this evening is, is not to put a period behind anything. It's more of, you know, certainly myself and Commissionership get asked a bunch of questions on our roles on the Main Street Board. We are certainly budgeting at the department level for the town. There are questions that the Main Street Board has of what the town's going to continue to do and all sorts of things in between, you know, how do we finish the rest of the year? And so I really wanted to have a conversation with the board, obviously with a lighter agenda, having a little bit of air to, to bring this conversation to light. And we don't have eight public hearings behind it or in front of it. And so I thought it was a good time to probably bring this up and, and, and start the conversation. Again, I don't think we'll end it tonight, but there's a lot of uncertainty about what this may entail moving forward. To give you a little bit of recent history and briefing, as Commissionership alluded to a few moments ago, certainly we've had Main Street Pittsburgh meetings and we've talked about how the rest of this year is going to operate, certainly from a funding standpoint. The, this board approved a $25,000 allocation to Main Street Pittsburgh, the 501(c)(3) entity back in December. They are using that to operate. Both Commissionership and I have communicated with Main Street, informing them that we expect to see kind of their budget for the rest of the year. Certainly if, if they wish to exceed that $25,000 number and wish to come back to the board, we, I think this board would appreciate seeing how any additional allocation will be spent. We've also asked our counterparts on Main Street to look at how the Welcome Center is, is to be funded in that. Because we understand that is a desire of, of, of some of the folks on Main Street. That they've created a separate committee to talk about having some transition of that where the town is unlikely to fund the Welcome Center as it's currently conceived of. But again, that's, that's all part of the conversation for the continuation of services. We've had a budget session with Main Street about the rest of the year. Certainly with no finality to that conversation, but certainly working with Michael Whitman, who serves as the treasurer on the Main Street Board. And he's, he's currently breaking out operational costs and calls until June 30th, 2022, the rest of the fiscal year, again, for Welcome Center related expenses and non-Welcome Center related expenses for Main Street Pittsburgh. We've also had a session with folks from the Main Street Board about when the town takes it over July 1st. And the budget included therein, there's obviously a lot of crossover with other, other groups like the PBA and certainly with some of the special events about, you know, who's going to pay for police officers. Right now, the town already pays for that as is. Is the town going to be willing to, to continue paying for that? The Main Street Pittsburgh has sponsored certain events. Is the town willing to sponsor those events? Again, that's all part of the, the budget conversation that we're having about whether that can be programmed in and how the town can or cannot support some of those financially. And so really, I, I think this session is, is to kind of bring this to the light a little bit. Again, I think this will be one of many conversations to come as we go through the budgeting process in particular. And so just wanted to kind of tee this up, begin the conversation and, and see where we go. I admittedly, I try to keep a good pulse of what this board desires. And I think as, as the longer we go on, the more and more I, I feel like that I'm, I'm reaching my limits of saying, I've got a good pulse on what my elected body wants to do moving forward. And so being able to have this conversation and understanding that will, will certainly help me both keep things moving forward on both ends, both my role as town manager and my role as a board member on Main Street Pittsburgh, and trying to build the proper mechanisms to make it as clean as possible. For instance, one of the things we've talked about is, you know, with a mural or a facade grant, those don't get done in 15 days. And so if those cross over the budget year, how do we handle that? We've talked about having, you know, some sort of like co-signee on the, the contracts or something of that nature, because if the town's going to be liable for it, I need Heather to pre-audit that contract. And, and so there's some considerations there that we're beginning to uncover some potential areas of exposure or weak points if we don't best consider them now. So we're trying to be proactive with those things. So I will stop there. Obviously allow Commissionership and his kind of dual capacity similar to mine, but from the elected side, certainly, and the policy side, and then allow the board to converse about it. And I'll, I'll just try to sit here and listen.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chris. The, the main, the main thing, and I, and I think we've all talked about this before, but is, you know, the, the Main Street Pittsburgh Board would like some head nods, at least from this board, that we want to continue programs like facade grants that will cross over the fiscal year, the mural that will cross over the fiscal year. So there's some, you know, legal details we need to figure out about that. But overall, that, that we're interested in doing that, which I think, you know, as Chris said, we've done in the past. And then I, I think also we, it's, it's in the consent agenda, but I think we did a, a big step this evening too, towards that transition in terms of approving the parameters for the board membership on the downtown advisory board. So I'd also ask fellow commissioners to start looking through that. And certainly the current Main Street Pittsburgh Board is, is a great source of these people willing to serve, I, I believe. But looking at, you know, who can fill those positions, who is willing to fill those positions that we have on their restaurant owners and managers, retail owners and managers, residents and, and those things. So, and we'll try and get that out also to the public to gauge some interest in serving on that board. But I think that that, that's a big step. And getting those positions filled as quickly as possible will help the transition also.
Very good. Are there questions for either Kyle or Chris?
I don't have a question, but I just have what sort of a question. So did you want tonight to find out from the commissioners and the mayor whether you want to go forward with the facade grant and the mural? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and Chris can probably provide more insight of how we should do that or the legal aspects maybe of it. But, you know, I think that, that overall, we want to provide some assurance for the business owners who are providing, for, you know, example, half of the facade grants or providing their building for the murals, that we will continue that through after June.
Okay. As far as I'm concerned, yes, I would like to continue to see those things going forward.
Would other commissioners like to speak to their interest in seeing those projects continue?
I agree.
I'm in agreement.
I, I don't wish to see the core operations of the Main Street program discontinued or interrupted during this transition period. This is a really vital set of activities and continuing to improve the appearances of downtown and work with businesses to do so, continuing where possible to work on infrastructure improvements. Those are all really, really important. And I think completely appropriate activities for the Main Street Pittsburgh program, whether it's operating as a 501(c)(3) or under the town's auspices. So I, I hope that continuity will be created.
Other comments?
And I would offer, from, from my perspective, the mechanisms of how we do some of these things, I don't want the board to, to, to worry too much about. That's, I take that as my responsibility to, to provide the legal way to, to have idea, match it with idea. And so what I'm, what I'm seeking from the board is, you know, are there, you know, current continuation? And again, things like facade grants, are you okay with doing that? Sounds like you are. That, that's perfect information for me to go forward with. Are there other things that you would like to see? Again, we will have the ability to, to shape it as we, as we wish, because it will be a department. And so, you know, if there are other things that the board wishes to see in the downtown, you know, we can try, we can certainly look to program those into the budget. So I think it's, the first step is, okay, what do you like about what we currently see? As you at least understand the, the Main Street program and, and, and the services provided with that? And what would you like maybe to see altered? Less of, more of those types of things. And I'll handle the, the construct of paperwork and, and mechanism. So I'm really looking for ideas. So I appreciate the inputs and provided so far, that, that's really helpful.
I guess.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Phil.
I also like the idea of having the special events. I especially, I think it was something on the main. I thought that was a good idea where the local restaurants were supposed to provide the meal. I thought that was a good, a good, good project. So I think at this time, hopefully more people will be involved in it. But it, I thought that was a good project. But I think some of the special events that were put on by Main Street, if those, some of those could be continued, I would like to see those.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think there's a lot of great events. And I know we've talked too about a special event policy, and I think we should do that for, for everyone. And then we can help talk as which, which events we want to sponsor as the town, the road closures and the police coverage and, and things like that, that have been done in the past. And we can go through that and continue it. And we are working on that as the Main Street Pittsburgh Board is putting together a suggested budget for, for next year in terms of what it costs to sponsor the events, host events and the, the various programs of, of Main Street. So we, we don't have that yet, but we should have it soon.
And Commissionership to that end, I'm also working in the line item budgets of the departments. And the, the governing body is a department in our town budget, it's 4100. And so we're actually going to create a, a separate, a new line item within that operating budget for special event sponsorships. And so you'll have a budget in, in your overall that you can see what you have available for the year, at least to start with. And obviously we can do budget amendments and assign fund balance to it. But you'll have a starting point to say, okay, we've got, you know, you know, five, $10,000, what, how much ever we want to put in there. I'm just using a, a generic number to say, okay, if we want to sponsor this, this is what we have and we can, we can help support this event by providing this. You know, if it's a, if it's a town function, I mean, it may just be us sponsoring by absorbing the cost. And so it may not be a direct payout, it may just be absorbing that cost. So we'll, we'll be having that for you. That'll be one of the conversations we have with the budget. But we want to be able to make that more apparent, because I do think the town does a lot. And I don't, I'm not saying that we always desire the pat on the back, but, but my staff works really hard for a lot of these events. And I think it's, it's, it's a great way for us to highlight that the town does support these events by having someone come and say, hey, we've got a great event coming to town. We love the board commissioner's support. And the board says absolutely agree, we love that event, we'd love to see it happen. Here's X dollars to support that event. And we look forward to having it in downtown or whatever the case may be. So we think there's going to be some refinement to that process overall that, that highlights that and recognizes the towns and particularly this board's contribution to a lot of these events that occur in town and that would not be as successful if it weren't for town forces or town input and getting those put on, so.
Just one comment and the mayor approach him regarding the Main Street. I differ a little bit on that. There were numerous restaurants that donated food, some monies and all like that at $100 a plate. And I understand they had over 200 people. It was held on a Sunday. Majority of our downtown businesses were closed, mine included. So as far as that, helping anything downtown, I, I didn't see any of it. I didn't see one. We didn't get anything out of it. Of course, I'm closed on Sundays as most other businesses are down now. So I would not be in favor of, of that or either something, some way different. It just, it didn't do anything for the downtown businesses. And, and that's just my opinion and take it for what it's worth. I think we can do something different maybe, but to close 15501 and have all the police and all the traffic held up. I just, I'm sorry, I wasn't for it. That's why I didn't attend it.
Commissioner Farrell, I appreciate you saying that. I, I think I commented at the time and then after the fact that I appreciated all the effort that went into it, but that I did think it was extraordinary that we blocked off a highway for it. And I thought it'd be more suitable on the side road. Perhaps Salisbury or another of the east-west streets. And I think it'd be a lot less expensive if we didn't have to pay to shut down the highway as well. And I like the idea generally that maybe just making some changes to it could make it more palatable to all of us and more beneficial to more businesses. Perhaps a different date, different time of year.
I agree 100% John, and that's a great comment regarding the road. And we do have a nice parking lot up there too that's available.
Yes.
Doesn't cost $6,000 to shut it down.
I'm sorry.
Well, I don't have any problem with that. It can be reworked, you know, flexibility. I don't have a problem with that, just like the concept of doing it.
Well, I would, I would ask if there's specific feedback, and obviously, I'm not saying that what you just said was generic. But the folks of Main Street are looking to do local on main on May 1st. So they're intending to go forward with the same plan as it was in, I guess, 2019, last time it was held. So if this board has feedback on that either this evening or something you want to communicate to me, you know, via email, that's fine too. But I would say the sooner the better so we can, can say, you know, the board is or is not supportive of closing Hillsborough Street. You know, we, we're okay if it's on Salisbury on either directional, but you know, maybe not Hillsborough. And, you know, something of that nature is really helpful for me to communicate to them. And so we can plan accordingly because they're going to be wanting to push out information about this in the coming days. So anything you have, all the better on that.
Certainly understand the marketing aspect of doing it on May 1st. But would it, would it be reasonable to ask that it were to happen on the Saturday, the day before, to just simply include more people and more businesses?
Yeah, I think that's, given where we're at with overall, I think that's certainly in the purview because I can tell you from a financial standpoint, as I've seen the books, unless someone tells me otherwise, that event's not getting put on unless the town of Pittsburgh puts the seed money into it. So I think this, I think this board has full autonomy to dictate time, location, date, all those factors and say, under these conditions, we'll be willing to support this. And if that's not met, then, then that conversation can be had at that point.
Chris, just one other update. I may be wrong too, but that May 1st is also first Sunday for downtown Pittsburgh also. That's the first Sunday in May. So that would be a first Sunday for downtown PBA.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. And I bet with the PBA this past week about starting first Sunday in March. So, you know, they typically don't encroach upon Summer Fest for July. That's usually kind of an off month, if you will, for the PBA. But I didn't even, you know, two different conversations. I didn't cross paths with that. So I'm not sure. I mean, obviously, there's crossover in some of the membership on the PBA and the Main Street Pittsburgh from a board perspective. But I'm not sure if that's been contemplated or not. But that's a great point. I'll make note of that.
But this specific feedback about that event in particular is really helpful. We didn't have anything together for this meeting, but hopefully we will for next meeting about that, about the local on main event. And the, the idea right now is that that would be the first fundraiser for the Welcome Center as a separate entity. But as Chris said, they would need some town support to put that event on. But it would be a fundraiser for the Welcome Center. So we really don't have a whole lot of details about that yet, other, other than they, you know, obviously need to plan the event to, to put it on. So this, this specific feedback about the days and the location and things like that is really helpful for the, the committee that's working on that. And again, when I probably bring more details to us at our next meeting about that request.
I do have one other thing to say, and Commissioner Farrell did indicate that it was costly. It was $100 a plate. So I think that was a little costly.
The conversation, oh, excuse me, mayor.
I was just going to say, I agree with Pamela Baldwin that, that what it, what it obviously did was it limited the number of people that could attend that event. And, and I don't know what kind of solution could be reached to make it more inclusive. But I agree, it was very costly.
And I was going to offer that the conversations that Commissioner Ship and I have been exposed to have discussed that number going up. That the dollar per plate would be more expensive than it was the $100 that they discussed, 125. And I think there was a brief mention of 150, but certainly as a fundraiser event, they're trying to show the proceeds there. So again, all part of the conversation for this board to consider with that.
Well, indeed, commodities are going up and even higher value local produce is going up. One business reported to me recently that their local beef supplier has doubled their prices. So it wouldn't be surprising, but I think that the guidance is, I hope, embraced. You know, Mr. Kennedy, I appreciate you pointing out our power in this situation, but I have no interest in dictating to volunteers how they organize this and bring it about. But to be sensitive to local concerns, I think it'd be great if they could have some component for lower pricing to increase inclusivity. And perhaps if it was organized up on the pavement of the future town hall site, we wouldn't have any street closures. We wouldn't have any highway closures. So it'd be a $6,000 less expenditure there. And we might even be able to have so many headcount that we could have much lower plate prices.
I'd like to know, just to clarify, Kyle, did you say that there was an interest in having this as a fundraiser for the Welcome Center? Explain, explain to me how that. I'm just not certain that I understand how that's going to mesh with the fact that Pittsburgh is going to pay a portion of it.
Sure. And that's a lot of the details to be worked out. Obviously, we're intentionally splitting the Main Street program from the Chatham County and Pittsburgh Welcome Center. And so, but as that happens, you know, we would ideally like both to be successful after, after the split. So there is a, there's a committee that's working on how, how the Welcome Center would continue to operate after Pittsburgh stops being the primary supporter of it. And so they're, they're still early on in those conversations. They've had, I believe, they have one meeting and they have one tomorrow. So this feedback about that event is, is really helpful for that. And I'll make sure that I get it to them this evening. But the, the talk was that they might ask the town for a loan to put on that event and then pay it back with the, with the proceeds from the event. So, you know, and I'm happy to take suggestions and questions of that group, but I don't necessarily want to get bogged down either before they bring us the proposal of, you know, how that's going, how the Welcome Center is going to operate generally, starting in July. And then, you know, what their funding, what their budget and their, and their funding plan is for that outside of the town of Pittsburgh and this potential fundraiser.
And Madam Mayor, if I may compliment Commissioner Ship's comments there, what we have asked of that committee is a formal request. Obviously, there, there's been some, some discussion about this or that and how it may work or may not work. And what we've asked is that, that they refine that, reduce it to writing and propose it. Give us something to actually respond to. I mean, we can, we can certainly have conjecture and have temperature check conversations. But I think we're at the point, especially with the event, you know, being just, you know, a matter of, you know, 90 days away, that we need to have the formal request and something for this board to respond to. So we've, we've requested that. I think that's one of the primary topics of conversation at their meeting tomorrow, which again, I am not on that committee. I don't believe Commissioner Ship's on that committee. So no one from the town represents our interest with that, and that's, that's perfectly okay. But we are, we have asked for that formal request because again, we can, we can conjecture all we want, but we actually need something to respond to. And I want something to, that, that this board, and as I say, my board can respond to without having to be forced into a hasty decision that you can contemplate the, the pros and cons and make a conscious decision about what's best to do with $10.
Thank you. Are there any further comments on this particular topic? Or are we ready to move to the Pittsburgh Affordable Housing Task Force membership update? Hearing, hearing nothing further, then I would again call on manager Chris Kennedy for, for that update.
Yes, ma'am. This is going to be a rather brief update as it was, was intended to be so. At the last board meeting, we had talked about re-engaging an affordable housing task force with a new set of tasks. We identified three separate tasks that we elaborated upon. So I put those together, contacted the, the members of the Affordable Housing Task Force that served before. I've gotten affirmative yes responses of a willingness to serve from, from everyone who previously served, except for Ms. Stephanie Watkins Cruz. She hasn't responded no. I presume like most of us, she's got a pretty full inbox and just hasn't responded. So I feel like Stephanie will probably wish to serve again, given her position with the county and obviously her interest and willingness to, to work with the Pittsburgh and its affordable housing. So to be determined of her willingness and really availability as much as anything. I also went to the planning board this past, or Monday a week ago and discussed with them. Obviously, Mr. Brian Taylor has passed away, won't be able to serve unfortunately. But we did have a planning board representative on there. So I've asked them to consider which one of their members may, may be most appropriately to serve. And so that's been asked of them. I haven't heard anything back to date. But we'll be back in touch with them to see if they, if they have a designated member. So really, the update is to say people remain interested, which is a good head start. And really where this conversation pivots is, you know, we've, we've got the six, seven, eight folks that served before, either precise people or by position, for instance, like the planning board, and whether the board wants to seek additional members. Obviously, the task has changed. And we've identified those. And we talked a little bit last time about, you know, some of these things where you could have a presentation, but not necessarily a person on the board, you know, on that advisory committee or the task force. And so is, is the number that we had before okay? Do we want to expand that? Do we want to target certain people knowing that we've, we've got the core group back? Obviously, if everyone responded back no, the answer may be different. So I think that was where we left off was if people are willing to serve again, do we want to expand the membership of that board or do we want to keep it the same or as close as we can?
Very good. Are there any questions for Chris Kennedy?
I would say my only comment related to that is one I've had before. And I don't know if this is a full member of, of the task force or, or as you said, a presentation. But I think it'd be good to have some type of representation from either Chapel Hill or Durham, based on the programs that they've had and the, and the successes that they've had. And then also from another developer of affordable housing like Third Wave or one of those other developers in addition to Habitat and to Chatham Park, who is a hopeful developer of affordable housing.
Any further comments?
I do have one comment. Since I won't be part of that, I would, I do have an idea for someone who works with affordable housing now to be a member of that board, and I will present that name to you all. Sharon Teller is actually her name. And Teller's a maiden name, but she works currently with affordable housing. So she might be a good individual to be on that task force.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. And if you'll send me her contact information, I'll reach out to her.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I would offer too, unlike, I'll say formal recommending bodies, where you need a vote, I think you don't have to bother with odds or evens. You know, we don't, you know, we're so concerned sometimes where we say, okay, how many people can vote? We want to make sure we have an odd number so we don't end up with a tie. Well, as a task force, you know, it's a recommendation. Presumably, it'll be unanimous, but even if there's a dissenting comment, all that's a factor in to your decision-making because they're there to support you to make a decision. So even if it's, I presume most of the feedback will probably be unanimous at times. But even if there's a dissenting vote, you want to know that because you, you're not, you're not just taking the, the vote for what it is. You're taking their actual feedback. So again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bother with, oh, gosh, well, that puts us at eight people. We got to find another one. I would just say, who do you feel like you want to advise you? And whatever list that is, whatever number that is, is sufficient. Don't, don't bother with, you know, there's no term, there's no bylaw, there's, there's no none, none of that. It's a, it's a, it's a simple, it's a task. And when the task is recommended, the board ceases to exist. So you have greater flexibility than you would say with a planning board or a pair of, or any other advisory board that you may be exposed to.
Thank you very much. Then we will go on. The next matter on the agenda is a closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A6? Is there such a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
James, thank you. Is there a second to James's motion? Jay Farrell, thank you. We will now leave open, from my understanding, this Zoom. And we will then meet on the Zoom that has been supplied to us for the closed session. So we will keep this open so that we'll have ease of return once we have discussed the matter in closed session. So I'm going to go ahead and leave.
I might be getting better at doing this. Do we have it? We have everybody. We have fourteen participants. Let's see. I think we're all here. Um. Now, in the resumption of our regular session, the final comments of the Board of Commissioners will be entertained now. So do we want to go around the table? Jay Farrell, do you have any additional comments?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I know that, Chris, we're a little shorthanded. I'm just requesting that I have paper agendas delivered, or I can pick them up at the office. My computer savviness has kind of left me in the dark today, but I do, I would like to have paper agendas if possible.
Yes, sir. We can make that happen. A couple meetings ago, we talked about, you know, transitioning that, particularly with some of these lighter agendas where, you know, you're not, not a lot of zoning items where you're, you know, looking at something. Obviously, we had some extenuating circumstances with this recent agenda, but we can, we'll make sure you get a paper copy of that, sir.
The other couple of things, we got that email from the Modern Life Restaurant. I've been by there numerous times at night. That fifteen five oh one south is extremely dark. I believe we mentioned this in the past several months ago, some kind of lighting off the Annex Building. We could follow up a little bit on that. I have seen numerous people drove right by myself, standing on the curb and didn't hardly see them. It's a, it's a little dark area there.
Yes, sir. And part of that's because the decorative lighting that's supposed to go in with the traffic circle project has not gone in. And so there's a deficit of lighting because there used to be wooden posts with, with the arms coming off. Those were removed. They're supposed to be back with decorative lighting. DOT is, I feel like, you know, two weeks every time I get an update, that they're working with Pike Engineering, who's Duke's subcontractor on that work. And frankly, I thought that work would have been in months ago. So obviously, we've, we've had conversations with the folks at the MOD. We've had conversations with DOT about having, you know, additional crosswalk mid-block there. DOT has been unsupportive to that thus far. So we're trying to find a better way. We do think when lighting does go in, we can, there'll be an opportunity there. And obviously, we need that yesterday, as you said, sir. And so, but I still think there's, there's got to be some sort of opportunity there for mid-block crossing. So we're trying to go through some complete street stuff and, and see if there's something that we can do because people just don't want to walk down to the ABC store and then up. And right now, they certainly can't because of the Soco Project blocking the sidewalk. And so we've had conversations about that with, oh gosh, Behringer Construction about, hey, when you do close the sidewalk, you need to create a safe access to people could travel northward, you know, either through the parking spaces that are on the street there or something. So we'll get back with them. Obviously, we're familiar with Dylan and those folks at the MOD, and we want to do what we can to help them out. And just, I mean, we've had incidents in the past. We had a pretty tragic accident last year there. So point well taken, and we'll see if we can push something forward again.
There's just one more to pile on to that, I guess. I do a fair amount of walking around town, and that, and that crossing down at the ABC store in the courthouse, I'd say is used probably five or 10 times less than people running across at the MOD there. And, and it's really probably the one of the most un- unknown crossings in town, I guess, when it, as, you know, you're coming out of town and the road finally opens up, I think it's like five lanes there. And it's just really, people, people just don't follow it at all. So if anything, if we could move that crosswalk to, you know, closer to the north, but also, and this was something that we had talked about with Main Street Pittsboro, that, you know, we also need to put some of the burden on pedestrians in that it may not be convenient to walk up to the circle or to walk down to the other crosswalk, but we, you know, we do have a small amount of crosswalks in town, and we have two near there. And so part of it is, you know, putting some of the onus on pedestrians to, A, carefully cross, cross the street wherever they do it, and, and utilize crosswalks that we have. But, but I agree, we could use more lighting, maybe even temporary lighting, depending on what Duke's schedule is, and more crosswalks in general.
Yeah, we've tried temporary lighting, there's just nowhere to put it. And the effort and what we exhausted with Pike last year, and we went to the county, because I asked them if I could install something on county property and pay for it with town funds, there's nothing over there on the other side of the street, on the parking lot side. And so the best we could do is attach something to the building, and they said that the, the amount of work it would take to do temporary lighting is the same work it would to do the work itself. So they said if we had, we're going to do that, we should just do the work. And I was like, I agree, we should just do the work. So we're a bit of an impasse with that. But, but yeah, I, I, we'll poke again and see if we can get a different result.
Chris, if it's, if it's just a matter of money, there are some really exciting solar-powered, battery-driven task lights that may be up to this application. And I don't think they're exorbitantly expensive. And I don't know that, if that's something that our, our town Public Works could make use of in future in the event of nighttime emergency water dig, you know, for example. But having battery-powered nighttime task lighting is certainly a lot less noxious than having a stinky generator that's also loud and dangerous because it impairs communication. And then the other thing in line with technology that I might mention is, I wonder, to your point, Commissionership, if that southerly crosswalk near the ABC store could be made more inviting and more effective with technical interventions that, that make it really clear to people that when they're on that walk, there's signals going north and south to let cars know that they're, they're on the walk. Or maybe a, an interactive system where you actually have a push button or a sensor system. I think Chapel Hill has some crosswalks that sense people when they're in there, and then lights start blinking as a result. You know, I, I would hope and imagine that people might use the system more if, if it were really, really clear that that's what it's there for, not just paint on the ground. And, and also, I think it's probably more likely we're going to get more pushback from DOT if we try to push that thing farther north to make it merely more convenient to the way people want to walk. I, I know DOT really has very strong feelings about where crosswalks ought to be placed.
Yes, sir, they have. And, and kind of my, I'll say flippant retort politely to the DOT, they talk about, we can't be so close because they'll back up the circle. Well, certainly, we have backed us up the circle all the time. So it's apparently not that big a concern that we have backs up, because if I come into work in the morning, you know, I'm generally in school traffic, you know, it's pretty, pretty rare that I don't stop closer to the circle than about John's Pizza. So obviously, our, our level of delay and accepting that is not, not so critical to the overall mission. So I, I'll get with Shorty, we're already looking at some downtown stuff as, as it is with some other crosswalks and stuff, and we'll, we'll go back again to it. It's not, not that it fell off the radar per se, but certainly, you know, as things come back up, we'll look at it with some current insight and see what we maybe can merge together and see if we can get something there. I like the idea of some, of the temporary stuff with, you know, some of the solar panels that we might be able to use, use for this application, but maybe apply it to other uses in the future. And certainly, one of the things comes to my mind is, we have the, one of the projects that we had in this year's budget for the police department was message boards. And we didn't have those accessible previously, so maybe we might be able to use those temporarily saying, hey, you know, poor, low lighting pedestrians.
I might be getting better at doing this. Do we have it? We have everybody? We have fourteen participants. Let's see. I think we're all here. Now, in the resumption of our regular session, the final comments of the Board of Commissioners will be entertained now. So do we want to go around the table? Jay Farrell, do you have any additional comments?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I know that, Chris, we're a little shorthanded. I'm just requesting that I have paper agendas delivered, or I can pick them up at the office. My computer savviness has kind of left me in the dark today, but I do, I would like to have paper agendas if possible.
Yes, sir, we can make that happen. A couple meetings ago, we talked about, you know, transitioning that, particularly with some of these lighter agendas where, you know, you're not, not a lot of zoning items where you're, you know, looking at something. Obviously, we had some extenuating circumstances with this recent agenda, but we can, we'll make sure you get a paper copy of that, sir.
The other couple of things, we got that email from the Modern Life Restaurant. I've been by there numerous times at night. That fifteen five oh one south is extremely dark. I believe we mentioned this in the past several months ago, some kind of lighting off the Annex Building. We could follow up a little bit on that. I have seen numerous people drove right by myself standing on the curb and didn't hardly see them. It's a, it's a little dark area there.
Yes, sir. And, and part of that's because the, the decorative lighting that's supposed to go in with the traffic circle project has not gone in. And so there's a deficit of lighting because there used to be wooden posts with, with the arms coming off. Those were removed. They're supposed to be back with decorative lighting. DOT is, I feel like, you know, two weeks every time I get an update that they're working with Pike Engineering, who's Duke's subcontractor on that work. And, and frankly, I thought that work would have been in months ago. So obviously, we've, we've had conversations with the folks at the MOD. We've had conversations with DOT about having, you know, an additional crosswalk mid-block there. DOT has been unsupportive to that thus far. So we're trying to find a better way. We do think when lighting does go in, we could, there'll be an opportunity there. And obviously, we, we need that yesterday, as, as you said, sir. And so, but I still think there's, there's got to be some sort of opportunity there for mid-block crossing. So we're trying to go through some complete street stuff and, and see if there's something that we can do because people just don't want to walk down to the ABC store and then up. And right now, they certainly can't because of the Soco project blocking the sidewalk. And so we've had conversations about that with, oh gosh, Behringer Construction about, hey, when you do close the sidewalk, you need to create a safe access to where people can travel northward. You know, either through the parking spaces that are on the street there or something. So we'll get back with them. Obviously, we're familiar with, with Dylan and those folks at the MOD, and we want to do what we can to help them out. And just, I mean, we've had incidents in the past. We had a pretty tragic accident last year there. So point well taken, and we'll see if we can push something forward again.
There's just one more to pile on to that, I guess. I do a fair amount of walking around town, and that, and that crossing down at the ABC store in the courthouse, I'd say is used probably five or 10 times less than people running across at the MOD there. And, and it's really probably the one of the most unknown crossings in town, I guess, when it, as, you know, you're coming out of town and the road finally opens up. I think it's like five lanes there. And it's just really, people, people just don't follow it at all. So if anything, if we could move that crosswalk to, you know, closer to the north. But also, and, and this was something that we had talked about with Main Street Pittsburgh, that, you know, we also need to put some of the burden on pedestrians in that it may not be convenient to walk up to the circle or to walk down to the other crosswalk, but we, you know, we do have a small amount of crosswalks in town, and we have two near there. And so part of it is, you know, putting some of the onus on pedestrians to, A, carefully cross, cross the street wherever they do it, and, and utilize crosswalks that we have. But, but I agree, we could use more lighting, maybe even temporary lighting, depending on what Duke's schedule is, and more crosswalks in general.
Yeah, we've tried temporary lighting. There's just nowhere to put it. And the, the effort and what we exhausted with Pike last year, and we went to the county because I asked him if I could install something on county property and pay for it with town funds. There's nothing over there on the other side of the street, on the parking lot side. And so the best we could do is attach something to the building. And they said that the, the amount of work it would take to do temporary lighting is the same work it would to do the work itself. So they said if we had, we're going to do that, we should just do the work. And I was like, I agree, we should just do the work. We're, we're a bit of an impasse with that. But, but yeah. We'll poke again and see if we can get a different result.
Chris, if it's, if it's just a matter of money, there are some really exciting solar-powered, battery-driven task lights that may be up to this application. And I, I don't think they're exorbitantly expensive. And I don't know that, if that's something that our, our town Public Works could make use of in future in the event of nighttime emergency water dig, you know, for example. But having battery-powered nighttime task lighting is certainly a lot less noxious than having a stinky generator that's also loud and dangerous because it impairs communication. And then the other thing in line with technology that I might mention is I wonder, to your point, Commissioner Ship, if that southerly crosswalk near the ABC store could be made more inviting and more effective with technical interventions that, that make it really clear to people that when they're on that walk, there's signals going north and south to let cars know that they're, they are on the walk. Or maybe a, an interactive system where you actually have a push button or a sensor system. I think Chapel Hill has some crosswalks that sense people when they're in there, and then lights start blinking as a result. You know, I, I would hope and imagine that people might use the system more if, if it were really, really clear that that's what it's there for, not just paint on the ground. And, and also, I think it's probably more likely we're going to get more pushback from DOT if we try to push that thing farther north to make it merely more convenient to the way people want to walk. I, I know DOT really has very strong feelings about where crosswalks ought to be placed.
It, it, yes, sir, they have. And, and kind of my, I'll say flippant retort politely to the DOT, they talk about, we can't be so close because they'll back up the circle. Well, certainly, we have backed us up the circle all the time. So it's apparently not that big a concern that we have backs up because if I come into work in the morning, you know, I'm, I'm generally in school traffic, you know, it's pretty, pretty rare that I don't stop closer to the circle than about John's Pizza. So obviously, our, our level of delay and accepting that is not, not so critical to the overall mission. So I, I'll, I'll get with Shorty. We're already looking at some downtown stuff as, as it is with some other crosswalks and stuff, and we'll, we'll go back again to it. It's not, not that it fell off the radar per se, but certainly, you know, as things come back up, we'll look at it with some current insight and see what we maybe can merge together and, and see if we can get something there. I like the idea of some, of the temporary stuff with, you know, some of the solar panels that we might be able to use, use for this application, but maybe apply it to other uses in the future. And certainly, one of the things comes to my mind is we have the, one of the projects that we had in this year's budget for the police department was message boards. And we didn't have those accessible previously. So maybe we might be able to use those temporarily saying, hey, you know, poor, low lighting pedestrians ahead or something like that, that might be able to provide a little bit of comfort. So I'll talk with Shorty about that. I've just made a note of that to myself to, again, while we're waiting on lighting, maybe that can supplant and provide an appropriate alert.
And the one, sorry, the one, the one little point you made about the, the sidewalk being closed there, we'd kind of talked about this during the Eagles project as well, but I, I would be, I'm in strong favor of requiring a alternate path if, if, if any project has a sidewalk closed for an extended period of time. And that, I think that's pretty typical in, in other cities. And with our, with the minimum number of sidewalks we have, I think it's important to have all of them accessible at all times.
Yeah, I know our engineering staff and Mr. Witt, an engineering, has been working on kind of a, a detail for that. So when someone comes in, they say, I'm going to do this work. That, that, that's part of our specs, that they show how they maneuver around that. So I, I will reiterate the importance of making sure that we have that in our site plans and other construction documents that people are adhering to that. So we have clear access because it's, it's really problematic when you're having to jump over things. And frankly, I really wanted a pair of tennis shoes in that Behringer project because I stepped in wet concrete that I didn't realize was wet. So I guess that's my fault. But, you know, certainly, I, I'm fortunately, I'm able to buy it, and I, I, I skirted the move without other, other bodily harm, but not everybody's so fortunate. So we'll try to get that attended to.
Okay, my, my final issue. I want, this kind of goes to the board and to Chris and staff. I would like to see how everybody felt about getting back to meeting in person, opening up the town offices. I think we're, this is just my opinion. I don't know how everybody else feels. I think it's time to move forward. I've had several people not necessarily complain, complain, but want, want to know why our town offices were always, were still closed. But I'll leave that up to any comments. But I, I really, I don't think Chris has even been here since we had a regular in-person meeting.
That's right. Commissioner Farrell, I, I'll second that, if it's a motion with a friendly amendment that I believe we need to make that movement based on good data. And I'd like for us to reach out to County Health Department and ask their opinion and input on it. It does seem like there's light at the end of the tunnel. It does seem like certainly hospitalization numbers, I'm told, are coming down. And all the vulnerable folks that I know who are going to get vaccinated have now gotten vaccinated, including my two children. And it's been long enough now that they have acquired full immunity. So I am tentatively heading out into face-to-face meetings. So I would not object to it. But I do very much want us to attend to making this decision based on data rather than just our wants or instincts.
And, and I think the county is a good data point. They have been meeting in person, I believe, for the majority of the pandemic, but in a modified way of, of the board and specific staff in the room and public and others who come in briefly for, for their portion, and then, of course, live stream as well. So I'm in favor of meeting at least as a board in person if we make the requisite investment in the proper video and, and audio equipment so that that hybrid meeting can be effective. It's very doable. It's done by all kinds of companies every day, but it would, it would be some investment in what is, you know, I, I would leave that to Chris, I guess, where the best location for that is because I think it could be used for staff too. But I, I think that would be a good compromise to, to kind of mimic what the, the county has been doing in terms of getting the, the board and, and presenters in the same room with a good setup for remote viewing and participation as well.
Let me say this. I don't know. I don't necessarily agree with going back in person. And basically, if they're limited, I think if we do go back in person, there needs to be limited number of people that can attend the meetings. And I, I have the matrix for you here. Now, the total number of cases in Chatham County with the last fourteen days is six hundred and forty. The number of people which are in the hospital, and these metrics come directly from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. There is three thousand ninety-four people currently hospitalized with a daily positive percentage of fourteen point four percent. So they are going down, that's for sure. But we still have to be very careful of, of this particular virus because the virus is definitely still active. And right now, it shows seventy-five percent of adult population vaccinated with at least one dose. So all of those things, as I said, they are decreasing, but of course, we still have to be very careful in reference to it. So I, I said, again, I don't mind going back in person. I would still wear my mask, but because there are still people who cannot take this particular, they can't take any shot because of medical situations. So basically, again, I would be very careful in doing that and limiting the number of people which can attend the meetings.
I strongly support your suggestion, Commissioner Baldwin, and, and Commissioner Ship, yours as well.
I think, I think the quality AV equipment is critical, even for us as a board, that if one of us is not able to attend or, or doesn't want to for a different situation, that we can participate equally as we do with everyone on Zoom. And I know that, like I said, the hybrid meetings are more difficult, but it's, it's certainly done. And, and there's certainly a lot more information now about the, the equipment to make that happen. As that's how I spend most of my days, actually, these days, so.
And Commissioner Ship, I would offer to that, you know, we, we have an agreement with the county that we can use the courthouse, which unless something has changed, and I don't believe that it has, remains the case, that they will allow us to use the courthouse. The one thing that we experienced with that before is they, they have the AV equipment, but it makes it rather difficult to hybrid the meeting. We could stream the meeting. You know, you can watch it just like you do if you're watching this meeting on YouTube where you're watching TV. But in order to, to be remote and participate, we found to be rather difficult. The county, to the best of my knowledge, still continues without remote participation to either comment, like in person or during the meeting. You must be, you must be live and in person. The board members are all present in that meeting. And so I think having the streaming capability may temper some of the number that would go to say, I'm interested, but I'm not planning to talk. Obviously, it's, you know, pro, pro football games are better on the couch to me than they are in person in many ways. I, I think they're very much the same probably for board meetings. People would, who aren't, you know, one of us would probably agree that they'd rather just watch on the couch with the screen turned off and just listen to it than, than maybe being in the room at the courthouse or in Town Hall. So I would say if, if the board was okay with meeting in person and not having remote participation, we could do that pretty soon. You know, at, at your, at your pleasure there. We certainly have a schedule with the county. So, you know, it probably wouldn't be the, the February twenty-eighth meeting if it was that soon, but we could definitely look at March, a month from today. If, if there's a desire to have the hybridization of it, I do think there's another investment that's going to be needed for that and how we do that. And honestly, I would be calling Commissioner Ship saying, hey, what do you use? Because I'm not, I'm not sure. I haven't, I haven't seen a successful hybridization of that. You know, there's the owl that people have that kind of shows the room because otherwise you're dealing with a lot of feedback of individual computers and such. So the owl's been, been regularly used. So I've seen that be as successful. But there's probably a commercial scale to that that I may not have been exposed to. So again, I, we're here to serve the board's pleasure, and if you want to be in person, we'll try to make it work and see what we can do.
I am going in now.
That's a good reason why. But I mean, Chris, we can get together on some more of the details. It may not be Town Hall. It may be, you know, at the, another town like at the, what is that, the Mill? Because I think it, I think that type of capability would be a benefit, probably more of a benefit to staff throughout the week than it would be to us twice a month. But so we could, we could get together on some of that.
I'll step in for Mayor Perry, seeing as he wants to have any additional comments.
I do. And thank you. So first, I want to, I want to thank Teresa Thompson some time ago for engaging an email correspondence regarding my concerns, lingering concerns about the Hillsborough Street widening project. I think this is our twenty-seven fifty-four, fifty-seven twenty-four, the DOT project. I, I continue to hear from citizens. And Commissioner Farrell, thank you for mentioning this earlier in the meeting. It's, it's good to hear from DOT Patrick Norman speaking about the Hillsborough Street widening. It's also good to hear that they don't expect to break ground until spring of twenty twenty-five. The history of this project, I think, is noteworthy. They originally had the idea of two sidewalks and two bike paths on, on the level of the vehicles. And we asked them to reconsider that with respect to the, the impacts on houses and width of pavement. And they came back with a ten-foot multi-use path and a single sidewalk on the west side. And it was better. It was cheaper. It had less impacts on houses. I remain concerned, and I'm hearing, continuing to hear concerns from folks about the width of the center lane. I understand DOT's position, but that is a position based on their policy. It doesn't reflect the needs or the wants of this community. And the width of the center lane is excessive for a residential neighborhood. It's sixteen feet. That's not appropriate for residential neighborhood. As far back as twenty fifteen, when I was knocking doors along this street, I heard those concerns. I heard about concerns that folks in that neighborhood wanted the speed limit to be lowered from forty-five to thirty-five for the entire length of that stretch. I continue to hear those concerns. And now in the final design, you know, if we allow it to be built with a sixteen-foot center lane plus two twelve-foot travel lanes, it's going to make it feel like a highway. And it's going to encourage people to speed. They will increase their speed. And that works counter to the desires of the neighbors. It works counter to safety despite what they're saying. And I also remain concerned about the stormwater impact to this project. Because with all that pavement, I mean, it's just very clear, simple math. If we bring it down from a sixteen-foot center lane to a ten- or twelve-foot center lane, I believe that we could save between two-thirds and a full acre of impervious surface in an area that already has flooding issues. So you know, back to the speeding issue, I think the end result of these speeds in that stretch means that traffic just stacks up along the twenty-five mile per hour segment of Hillsborough Street where Commissioner Ship and Mayor Perry live. And I know that Commissioner Ship and Mary Perry have, have seen these traffic jams in the evenings, and perhaps it's throughout the day. But that stacking effect could be reduced somewhat by slowing the traffic farther up the road, a mile up the road, by reducing the speed limit and, and not having such a, a giant center turn lane. It, it, it makes me wonder if there's a need not associated with this project, but a need for an actual concerted corridor study there. I don't want to really broach that issue because I think that DOT will likely grab onto that and say, well, then let's just delay the project and do the study. But I, I hope that we can learn from what the lessons that we're learning right now with regard to the Sanford Road section closer to your neighborhood, Mr. Kennedy. Because that's only going to get worse and much worse with a two thousand two hundred residential unit project going in south of you. I think there's a real need for a corridor study there on a two-lane road, which is soon going to become much, much heavier traffic. And hopefully, in the course of that, we can get a multi-use path and a nice sidewalk there too. But I appreciate you hearing my concerns. I'm always eager to hear if there are other commissioners who share my concerns.
Commissioner Barnes, if I may interject before any other commissioner speak on that. And Commissioner Farrell, correct me if you heard differently as well. During the PBA meeting, DOT was talking about a twelve-foot center lane. They had pivoted from the sixteen, and Mr. Norman had talked about some of the concerns with that, and they were looking at some initial right-of-way. So that, that was probably the main shift of the conversation outside the time, on the timeline, got pushed back a little bit from last I had heard about it through the consultants. But if I recall correctly, and Commissioner Farrell, correct me if you recall differently, but I believe Patrick Norman was saying they were looking at a twelve, twelve, and twelve for that, for that three-lane section.
That's, that's great. That's great.
And then we've, we've talked with DOT about the speed. And basically, they, they have said that they're not going to change the speed. That, you know, we've, we've talked about, you know, the section where it converts closer to downtown. And they said, you know, that's non-conforming, doesn't mean any of the stuff that if they were to do a speed analysis, they probably raise the speed. So they advise us to not, not even ask. So with that advice, we've said, okay, we're not going to ask you to do a speed study on that section or the sections between Powell Place and downtown. But, but I think to your point, you know, obviously, there's a lot of positive externalities of reducing that center lane, impervious surface being one and stormwater management with that. But anytime you tighten the road up, you know, that, that's a standard traffic calming aspect. And we, and we, as, as much as the pavements will be there, we like to stay between the mayonnaise and the mustard. So if that lane's tighter, we'll feel better about doing that. So I think there's been some positive movement to your concerns.
Well, that's very good to hear because that's, it's, it's not what they said in twenty nineteen after they gathered the public input, and they, they did say they were stuck with that sixteen-foot, and they were quite strong on that point. So I'll be very relieved to see that in writing or in drawings. And forgive me, but I, I do want to continue pressing the forty-five mile per hour issue. The reason being, I think that that analysis was done in twenty seventeen, and I feel confident that it did not take into consideration the Chatham Parkway. And the relief that the Chatham Parkway will provide, they continue to say that they need to have that speed because of the importance of that highway through town. But I hope soon we will have the Chatham Parkway providing that relief. So, yeah, let's continue to think hard about this and creatively.
Yep. And, and to that late, that conversation about Chatham Parkway in my weekly update that I hope to have you tomorrow, that talks about, you know, the week that was, I had a meeting last week with the representative of Chatham Park. We've been, ever since the Townsend track went through, we've been talking about, okay, we, we heard a lot of feedback about downtown traffic adding twenty-three hundred units south of the circle that would likely want to travel through or northward of it. How do we address that? And so we've, we've been working with Chatham Park, their attorneys and DOT to try to find a creative way. Obviously, for the existing section, we looked at the bonus allocation. We have actually found another statute that is actually one-to-one dollars and not just fifty cents on the dollar that may allow us to move that road forward quicker in the process than waiting for it to be get programmed in the STIP. So there's some, there's still some to be determined aspects of that. So there's some, there's still some to be determined aspects of that. And we're kind of in the investigation side of it, trying to see, you know, the temperature of DOT to do it and whether we qualify. It's, it's, I'll say it's a kind of an obscure statute. Because I'm, I'm not, I've never been exposed to it previously, but again, we. Your, your point remains the same, we're trying to, trying to contemplate ways that we can. Be more proactive with some of our roadway improvements instead of reactive. To alleviate some of that stress and delay that, that occurs particularly on our main thoroughfare through the middle of town, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just make a comment about that fifteen five oh one situation. Basically, that actually was something I requested when I got on the board initially in two thousand and five. Because the residents on fifteen five oh one had indicated to me, the only thing that the town did was annex them into town. Didn't build any sidewalks, but very few, little lights, little lighting down there, so basically I've always been pushing. For a sidewalk that goes all the way to Northwood. From downtown Pittsboro all the way, now the other stuff, we, the board added that. Which was that they wanted the turn lane and the multimodal transportation lane, that's what pushed the. The project out some years because DOT said, basically, we're going to have to look at this again. So, but in terms of getting all of that and all of the land to do all of that, I don't know how that's going to work. Because that is going to put a lot of homes right there on the road. So that can cause a lot of problems, we may have to reduce that and not have that center turning lane. Or just have just that one lane, the one sidewalk instead of the multimodal. So those are things which are, are of concern also, but I don't know about doing another study. Because basically studies, they take a long time and then they have the same results to me as we've already have. That we have now, so basically, I say maybe we need to go on and decrease that particular project. Because I don't see where they're going to have enough room with all of those residents that are on fifteen five oh one to expand the road that large. I just don't see it.
Well, Mayor Baldwin, to that point, I, I'll see what I can, I'll contact Patrick Norman and see if I can get the most current, we, we've got some. You know, some information that is, you know, publicly available, but I'll see if there's a more modern document that shows that routing. Particularly one with, with the most current cross-section for the center lane. To make sure that, that my recollection is correct and, and for Mr. Bonds' concern and really not just his, but others' concerns about that. The expansiveness and the width of that, excuse me, of that center lane, so I'll talk to him and see if I can find something with that that kind of shows that. And at least if, if your, if your concerns persist by seeing that routing. That you at least know where the pinch points are, I'll see if I can get that up and provide to the board.
Thank you.
Any other? Final comments aboard?
Just a couple, I guess the, Mayor Perry did text me and said she's having problems with her internet, which we, which we saw and I guess she's not able to, to get on now, but. I did want to mention to the. In, in regard to a lot of things we've been talking about this evening, the, we have. The bike lane in the new vineyard area, Chatham Park, and I appreciate their attention to parking in it. And, or, or not parking in it rather, but I, I do think we should look at our, our standards maybe of marking those bike lanes. I don't think that they are well-marked and I know some other towns have done green lines, I guess that would be relish, Chris, on, on that line, but. So, you know, I think that some better marking would be appropriate there, to, to me, it. It should be clear that it's not parking, that it's not really big enough to park in, but I still see a lot of parking happening there. And I think either more, more frequent bike marks or some type of distinguishing color would, would help. People realize that and then obviously help on the enforcement side also, since we, we don't have very many bike lanes now or, or almost none. I think it, it'd be a good time to look at those standards for, for marking and, and make it more clear going forward as we get more and more bike lanes.
Yeah, we can, we can absolutely do that and, you know, there's a couple of products you can. You know, typical kind of fog seal approach where it's sprayed out, but there's also some. More tactile adhesives that you can put there, if you, you know, some of the cycle tracks that you see, you know, in, in bigger cities where there's a. You know, they have the little stick-up bollards that you could, a car can technically drive through them. In terms like you're not going to stop a pickup truck for those little bollards, but it's, it's a physical barrier that there's usually, you know, a neon green kind of bike lane. You know, again, Durham's starting to do some of their bus lanes with like kind of a state red color. Say, hey, this is a bus, so they, they kind of clear delineation of, hey, this isn't like regular pavement and so. You know, historically, people have just painted curbs, you know, a red curb means it's a fire lane, yellow curb means it's, 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 you know, non-parking. Or a loading zone, but even curbs, they fade over time, they're, they're not as obvious as some other things, so. I would say we could definitely look at that and, and add that to the specs and see if we can get that installed, because I do think the visual. Component, as I said earlier, we like to follow paint, even though paint doesn't really prescribe all, all that much, but we. We're all rule followers in that aspect to the most, most degree, so I think some paint would certainly help.
Okay, thank you, and then just another event to mention, I guess, is on February twenty-sixth, there's the Pittsburgh Mardi Gras Pub Crawl. So there's currently eleven establishments around Pittsburgh participating in that and there, I know this, this happened last fall too, and there are some improvement comments, so there will be a shuttle. Operating between all those locations, so you can, you can walk to them if they're near or you can take a shuttle to all the different establishments around downtown Pittsburgh. And that's February twenty-sixth all over Pittsburgh.
Any other commissioner? Comments for this evening? If there are none, I'll, I'll get, I'll play a little Mayor Perry entertaining motion for adjournment.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
I have one thing, and on a lighter note, I would just like to let everybody know that the Northwood High School Boys and Girls Basketball Team won conference champions. And they're also playing in the tournament championship quarter semifinals Wednesday night. Which are being held in Pittsburgh and if they, both teams win, they will be in the tournament championship Friday night. So we, we, I did get a call from Cameron Vernon and there's numerous college coaches and recruiters going to be at these. Two games, Wednesday and Friday, so we got a lot of great talent.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrell.
Good information. Well. If there's nothing else, if there's no additional commissioner comments or concerns, then we can call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second or no second? Okay, all in favor? Say aye, aye, good night, everyone.
Thank you, Kelly.